So the city council, you have to navigate that. So I've got a two-part question. One is, where does the city council need fixing from your point of view? And two, the reality is if you want stuff done, you have to work with other people and sometimes they want stuff done. What's the line that you're not going to cross to get something you want passed, passed? So what's, what needs fixing and what's the line you won't cross?
I never betray my, you know, my personal morals to get something passed even if I think it was worthwhile. But I'll tell you what I think needs to be solved at the city council. We've spent the last few years talking about what power the mayor should have, is she, is the mayor too strong, should the council have more power? The fact of the matter is the council's not using the power that they have today. The county, the city council has the power to subpoena documents and testimony on these major issues that we face in our city. Two years before Freddie Gray was killed, Tyrone West was killed in the 4th Council District. Think about what would happen if it didn't take the West family 111 days to get a response from City Hall, that they used the power of the subpoena to get information from the police department about what happened with that young man. Maybe we could have started to release that pressure valve in our communities around the city. I'll give you another example. When we read in the newspaper that women in city housing were being forced to perform sex acts to get simple repairs in their home, the quote in the newspaper was, "I don't know what city, what power the city council has of oversight." Think about if we had used the power of subpoena to find out when Paul Graziano knew that that issue was going on, to find out how widespread it was, not when it showed up in the newspaper, but when these rumors were going on for years before. We all knew there were troubles in the housing department. The city council can do the tough work of investigation and oversight, and that's what needs to change on the council moving forward.
How long do I get again? I get two minutes. I get two minutes. I get two minutes, which is about one thirtieth of the time that I spent meeting with the council president's staff in the law department to try to get a clear understanding of the conflicting laws that govern what the city council can do in terms of requiring oaths and producing witnesses. There is an ordinance that says that the city council can subpoena municipal agencies, which the housing authority is not, nor is the state medical examiner, who was the person who made the Tyrone West family wait 111 days for an autopsy, regardless of the fact that supposedly your partners in the legislature were supposed to be helping with that. Because the state medical examiner is not part of city government, it is part of state government. What needs fixing? Lots of things need fixing in Baltimore city government. It's one of the things that I have focused on in my tenure on the council. I am the one who has introduced a package of charter amendments saying, identifying the things that we need to do to change the balance of power between the council and the mayor. To continue to harp on the power that we supposedly have when we don't just distracts you and us from the conversation we should be having, which is, at the end of this year, when we get to the general, when we get to the general election, are there going to be anything on the ballot? Are there gonna be the ballot questions that we need so that we can actually have substantive change? Instead of sitting here arguing about, do we have the power or don't we? Can we please just actually go get it?
Whether the proposals that have been brought forward regarding the change of the powers of the city council are at this juncture moot, because the point is, what can we do with what we have currently? And I believe that we can do a lot. First and foremost, the last, the current General Assembly has shown us that when we collaborate as a city, as citizens, and tell our city delegation in Annapolis what's important to us, things can be done. So with all due respect, I believe that if we need the participation of the General Assembly to get things done, we can do it. And it's the important, it's important for the councilman to be the watchdog to collaborate with the members of the General Assembly, to collaborate with each other. Now, the question is, what would I do and what would I not do to get things done? I am more than willing to collaborate, not only with colleagues in Annapolis, or especially other colleagues in Baltimore, to get things done in our district or in their district. What I will stop short of doing is I will not support anything in our district, or in another district especially, for the benefit of the special interest of that party. That's where I draw the line. It's not the, it's not the mass contributor to a political election that drives the machine. It is the citizen, it is the resident, and that's where I draw my line. Thank you.
All right. So, point of information here, in 2010, I was elected to the Democratic State Central Committee. And that body is formed to support Democratic candidates in partisan elections, right? That's the duty, that's the basic scope. What did I do? That was in 2010. Here's what I've done. 2006, working together with a male college student group, Big Brothers Big Sisters, I started a mentoring program at Mergo High School. 2009, I engaged neighborhood youth in Rich Norv Recycles, an event designed to educate neighbors about the common change in trash recycling. 2010, working together with community leaders, such as a couple that I see in the audience today, Dear Heba Brown and others, we created something called Yay is Friday. We went to area churches around on Fridays and put young people, board games, Xboxes, et cetera, pizza, to give them something to do. Why? Because we were closing rec centers. 2011, in conjunction with other Baltimore leaders, I helped implement another installment of the City Lot Program, Men Reading in Schools. 2013, working together with an organization called Young Men with Power, I coached boys around issues of confidence and future manhood. 2014, I launched something called Play Fit, Stay Fit, which was an event for mothers and sons. Why? It was a response to the national momentum, the outcry about childhood obesity. That was 2014. 2015, after the riots, the Freddie Gray situation, I personally took it upon myself to tour our schools, to go around to different ones, to talk to our young people about, how are you feeling? I created a model called the Epps Program to help bring out feelings and talk about the positive solutions that we can do as 11th graders, as 7th graders in our community. It's not about a title. It's not about falling for office and doing a whole bunch of stuff in a few months. This is about history and longevity and what comes from your heart. Now, if we had a councilperson doing those same things, how much more? Rodney Burris, City Council. Thank you.
So, before we moved to Baltimore, we moved from Berkeley, California, and on Shattuck Avenue, there was lots of stores boarded up, lots of homeless people. And what I noticed was, block by block, new stores started coming in, paint started going up, and it just started moving down Shattuck. And at some point, you knew the opposite had happened, where block by block, it came back. So we have a vision for York Road. How do we implement that vision and how do we make York Road kind of like that framework that supports?
This one.
And your next bill.
Aaron worked long and hard to get me to, you know, fully embrace the zipper metaphor for York Road. And that was before I was going to be comparative, being the pull tab on it. So, actually, one of the precepts of good community development is you build from strength. And as some of you know, because I've talked about this before, I spent the eight years before I was on the council, working for a community development corporation down in southeast. And one of the things that you can easily see, and it was, it shows up in the report, you read all the way through the whole report, is that the corridor is stronger at the north than it is at the south. The trick is bringing the strength down, bringing this, building from that strength, and then creating periodic additional nodes of strength to build from. The model that I was taught back when I was at Patterson Park was, you don't clean an oil spill by parachuting into the middle of it. You clean an oil spill by going to the edges and working your way in. And so, if you look at York Road over the last five or six years, you can see that the strength from up here in the York Belvedere area is already starting to spread south. It's not moving as fast as we'd like, but it is starting. You're seeing businesses like Toss, and Bosphorus, and Flight, and now Nayla's Kitchen opening up south of Staples. And in the next couple of months, we're gonna have Be More Kitchen opening up in the old car dealership, south of Benning House. And there's a, and there's, well, yeah, we could clap for that. We can clap for that. That's gonna be, that's gonna be, that's gonna be a tremendous, wonderful new addition to the corridor. There's a, there's gonna, what we need to do is we need to continue to move that strength, and we need to build on it from the south moving up, so they can meet.
The progress we've made is great, but we need to do a whole lot more. In Baltimore, we have concentrated ourselves in bringing up our tourist attractions. We now need to concentrate in neighborhoods like our own. We need anchors, supermarkets. We need to use the incentives. TIPS are not a bad word anymore. Thanks, thanks to collaboration with our General Assembly, it appears that the artificial richness of TIPS is no longer going to affect our school system, if all goes to plan. It appears that the governor's going to make sure that happens, at least for the next three years, which means we can move forward. We can now take advantage of these projects, or these incentives that have made our tourist attractions great, to work in our neighborhoods. That's what we need. One, while it's important to do one business at a time, we need a shot in the arm. And it's a time where we go back to our priorities and we redistribute our incentives in our neighborhoods, starting in our case, on the York Road Corridor. Thank you.
All right. Francesco.
No, he just went.
He just went.
He went first?
No.
You went first, Bill.
And I just finished.
I know, it's just the two of us. It's, we're the only two who've gone. Your turn.
Welcome back, Rodney. Welcome back.
He was deep in thought.
Was he only answering the best question?
I think he asked the questions.
Okay, do me a favor, Umer, re-give me that question. I thought I went, I thought I went first, because you gave me the question.
So there's a vision for the York Road Corridor?
Gotcha.
How do we make it a reality?
Awesome. So, I was having a, thank you. I was having a conversation with an organization called the National American Trade School. And what they do is that they train people in hands-on careers, electrical work, truck driving, home improvement, et cetera. I definitely believe in the value of businesses. I love it. I go to Flight, I eat cheese steaks, I go to Stokos all the time, I go to Roma, Italy. Me and my kids were just in Toss the other, the other day, made a whole bunch of copies recently in Staples. I live here, we live here, right? I utilize this. And the thing that I think is important is, we gotta also, as we're building up the business sector of the York Road Corridor, get the homes around it. Now, I was talking to the National Association of Trade School, NATS, because I was trying to figure out, how can we take those young men and women who are going through their program, gaining certifications, to give them service learning to work at ridiculously cut rates to improve homes, communities, right around here? And so I was thinking that if we match what's going on already, right? And the big plans that we've set in those meetings about, how do we do the York Road Corridor, and the meetings, and medians, and the bike lanes, and those things, but if we also get the neighborhoods healthy, all of a sudden, you have a synergy going on in our community that works hand in hand and produces a situation where the sum is greater than the parts. That's my approach, to help build up the homes in the neighborhoods, to go hand in hand with the business, business development, to make our corridor, our home, our community, a much better place. Thank you so much.
The good news is, we have the plan, and thanks to many of you in this room tonight that helped pull it together. The one place where I would disagree with the analogy about parachuting into an oil spill is that Penlucy can't wait. There's folks that live there, and they deserve to have a good quality of life today, not 10 years from now. What's lacking, and what I mentioned was quoted in that report, what's lacking is bringing those city resources that only city government can do, trash pickup, street sweeping, making sure that we concentrate those activities in the places with the greatest need, not with the biggest voice. We can use data-driven government again. We used to, we used to be a national model, an international model, on how we use data to better deploy our limited resources for the greatest benefit. We got away from that. And now, when you drive across the street on York Road, you see the trash building up, you see the vacant properties building up. We need to get back to where we use data-driven government. And quite frankly, if the mayor, the next mayor doesn't choose to do it, I think the city council can start doing that. And in fact, in my first 100 days as a city councilperson, I'm gonna start a district force stat. I'm gonna use that power of subpoena to get information from the agencies that we can start grading and keeping them accountable for good service in our neighborhoods. That's how we pull things together.
Sir Rodney?
Yes.
There's lots of controversy around liquor establishments?
Actually, I think that starts with Francesco.
Oh, my apologies. Liquor establishments, you're, did you know they was serving beer as we came?
I didn't have any.
So, how do we balance, you know, having businesses that need to be there and be vibrant and create jobs, and also make it a safer community? And what's the balance, and what do you plan to do about it?
That's an important question for our district. Keep in mind, I come from a culture where the fruit of the vine is everyday life, okay? Be it wine, be it grappa, it's a part of our life, and up until recently, even, even the military had a, had a ration of wine, and it was considered fine. But, while the fruit of the vine is a part of most of our lives, because after all, fundamentally, we're all immigrants, and in many cases, part of our life, but there is a, there is a distinct line that has to be drawn. When we have under, establishments promoting underage drinking, when we have establishments promoting violence, these cannot exist in our district. Because with all due respect, a legitimate business serving libation or selling packaged goods is not the devil. The devil is the establishment that doesn't follow the regulations, doesn't follow the laws, and creates havoc in our community. And that's what we need to, we need to define the difference between havoc and everyday honest business establishments. Do we need a liquor store in every corner? No. Okay? With all due respect, we need to be, we need to be rational, okay? We need to be able to, you know, this is the city that invented Ain't the Beer Cold. So obviously, that, that isn't going to, that, that culture isn't gonna change, but we don't, we need to make sure that it's done in a proper fashion, not, not in a way that is illegal, and that creates havoc in our society, and danger, and violence. That's what's important to me.
One of the things I did when I first moved around here, I got involved with our progressive fight for the liquor, liquor situation here along the York Road Corridor. Early around, maybe 2008, 2009, there was an organization that we helped put together. It was called CORL, it was an acronym, it's still for Communities Organized for Responsible Alcohol Laws. I'm not against drinking. I don't really drink a lot. My wife can drink me under the table. Right? I'm not, I'm, I'm, I can admit that.
She's not here to defend her father.
Yeah. But I say that to say, I'm not against, I'm not against liquor stores, I'm not against alcohol, but what I would love is responsible establishments. What I don't like is having to confront a cashier, because that 14-year-old that looks 14 to me just asked to buy a cigarrelle, and you gave it to him. Right? Now, I don't have the power to, I don't even wanna go arrest that kid, or call, or any of that kind of stuff, because we don't need more records that create that second-class citizenship. But I wanna, hey, God, we're right here, we see that. That's part one of the advocacy. The second thing, in 2013, I believe it was, our councilman held one of his district-wide meetings, and it was, it was to pull people together to talk about the alcohol and liquor establishment here. And I was one of the speakers at that workshop. And what I did was, I took people through a series of questions that said, first of all, what's your feelings about our situation? And we got the whole range. And then I said, what are some of the positives of having liquor store establishments along our corridor? Because there are some, right? Business, et cetera, people like to have a sip, my wife, et cetera. Then I said, well, what are some of the problems? We don't live in a utopia. What are some of the challenges we face? And we went through that, but the atmosphere was set with the feelings and the positives. By the time we got to the last component, the solutions, people's frame of reference was different than, ah, I hate, I hate, I hate. It was an environment conducive to coming together. That's the work of a councilman. This is what we can do, started from day one. Rodney Burris, City Council. Thank you.
Brian Hammack, City Council.
Such great flattery.
Imitation is the...
There we go.
Look, the, the over-concentration of liquor stores in our community is a problem, but it's not the problem. It's a symptom of an illness that we have in our communities, a public health crisis that we're facing in communities in our part of town, our neighbors. When we have children that grow up with the trauma of seeing their friends, seeing their brother, their sister, their mother, their father, the victim of violent crime, that's a trauma that weighs on a child. And maybe you and I may seek guidance with our pastor, or with a therapist, or with a family member, but sometimes people seek that therapy in a bottle. That's why we have an urban concentration of liquor stores on the corridor. It's not because, it's because there's a customer base for it with the underlying trauma. We need to address that. Now, we also need to hold the liquor establishments accountable to be good neighbors. And I mentioned before, I'm an attorney. I represented two community associations in northeast Baltimore to shut down two problem liquor establishments, well before we got, at least for a one-year period, a community-friendly liquor board. It was not a community-friendly liquor board. And in fact, my community agreement that I put in place, the chairman of the liquor board said it was the most aggressive and community-friendly agreement that he had ever seen on his watch. And the year, in the next year, when they came in for their renewal, they got shut down.
Can you repeat the actual question?
So the balance of, you know, America, you can be a businessman, liquor establishments, but there's a balance with community, and so how do we keep the good ones and keep the community happy?
Okay, so, the good ones, that's, that's the question. Because when you talk about concentrations of liquor stores on the York Road Corridor, how, how many people, shout out how many liquor stores you think there are on the York Road Corridor?
Too many.
Too many, too many, right, okay. Okay. Less. In terms of places that sell packaged goods, there are less than 10. There are only two. There are only two south of Woodburn. At this point, we're down to, we have closed, through the hard work of the York Road Partnership and its increasingly misnamed ad hoc liquor committee, you know, okay? We have closed a lot of the problem places in the southern part. In the northern part, there are as many packaged goods stores north of Belvedere as there are in, in that section, that, that section of York Road, between Belvedere and Northern Parkway, there are as many packaged goods operations there as there are in the 5400 block of York Road. The difference is how they're run and why they're there. The ones north of Belvedere are there so that people can come and buy alcohol to take home, to be part of a responsible lifestyle, hopefully. I, I'll talk to your wife later about this. I, I was like, my wife cannot drink me under the table, and I am, I am perfectly okay with that. But in, in, the, the reality is that there are packaged goods stores that function as legal drug dealers. They are there to provide alcohol for people who need alcohol, and they need it, and they drink it too close to that store. And sometimes those stores aren't willing to work with the community on changing that paradigm. And those are the ones that we should be working with. And that's why we need more liquor-friendly, I'm sorry, more community-friendly liquor regulation at the state level.
So, a question or two ago, we moved into people in the community asking these questions, so I'm just the mouthpiece for those. And so Frank asked, you know, how are you gonna balance your time? Do you have enough time to devote to this task? Do you have a full-time job? How do you propose to balance it? And I think this time for real, you're up. Let's be sure.
So, here's the deal. I definitely wish my wife was here. She is with, my daughter turned seven today. So, I have, I drug a couple of my kids here, but that particular one gets to be out with mommy and do some fun stuff, so that's great.
This is fun.
This is, yeah. This is fun for seven-year-olds, they love this sort of thing. Here's the deal. One of the things that I've gotten in trouble with, a lot with, with my wife, for, is doing this sort of stuff for free, for years, for years. Now, my wife and I, we took in a child, we have a few of our own, we, for a couple of years, we took in my sister's children. I had a lot of children at one point in my house. And yet, any given weeknight, I'm like, listen, listen, I'm the president of the parent group, I gotta, I'll take a couple of kids with me. You guys have seen me with my kids, all over the place. Hey, I gotta go over here. And so, a lot of times, she's like, listen, I know you left Baltimore, I agree, we're here, we're at the schools, but I need you to not either do this for free, or be home a little bit more. So, I couldn't all of a sudden create money, so I kinda pulled back a little bit on how much I was out.
This is, we are going to go out and try to help and try to contribute and try to be part of the civic fabric that is our neighborhood and our district, regardless of whether or not we're actually elected to something, or at least I hope we all will. At least I hope we all will. In 2007, when there were nine of us running for the empty seat, I was disheartened that after that race was over, only one other person who had been involved in that race stayed involved in their community association and in really the affairs of the district. I hope that after this race is over, we all will still be just as interested in working collaboratively.
For the last 28 years, as I mentioned, I've been the Italian consul in Maryland. I've been out five, six days a week, every night, statewide, doing what I was doing. I too am not a stranger to working 18-hour days. In December, I gave that position up to run for office, to commit to running for this position. I clearly have a business development consulting practice, but with that said, should I have the pleasure of your vote of confidence and elected to the council, I will dedicate myself as a full-time councilman, other than assisting and continuing on nonprofit boards that I have the pleasure of participating on and being, in certain cases, chair, I will, my exclusive gainful employment will be the city council. Thank you.
Brian Hammack, City Council.
I was just formulating the question. So, how long is this term for?
Four years.
Four years.
So, halfway through this term, how will you know you're being successful? What would you be able to see, hear, and physically say, you know, I did this? What does success look like for you?
Two years in, it's going to be the individuals that I see on the 5400 block of York Road, on the 500 block of 43rd Street, on the 500 block of Tunbridge, and the 600 block and 700 block. See them taking advantage of the opportunities in local workforce development that we implement because when we look at these large projects that are on the line, coming down the line over these next few years, Under Armour, other growth at the port, we require local hiring, we require project labor agreements. So, not only do we hire local people, we ensure that they get a fair wage, and that they get health benefits, and that they get a dignified path of retirement. So, the measure of my success is going to be in the eyes of the individual that I see today that doesn't want to do what he's doing. He wants to have a different path, and we provide him with that path.
Okay. How, what does success look like? That's a great Umar question. All right. Okay, so, two years in, we will have had two budget cycles in which the city council was an actual partner in putting together the budget priorities for Baltimore City because we passed my charter amendment that says that the city council cannot only cut the budget, we can also add to it if we think that the mayor's priorities do not line up with the people's. Let's see, what else, what else would look like success? On a more local level, we would have a business improvement district that was up and running and able to begin to make some of the tangible service interactions. I know it would be great if the city did more everywhere. I know that would be great. But what would also be great would be if we were organized collectively to do more in our own areas for ourselves. Right now, we have a number of businesses along the York Road corridor that want to be part of that. They want to help. We need to pull in the ones that don't want to help and make sure that all of those resources are arrayed into things like additional public safety help, additional cleaning along the corridor, additional greening support for the volunteer activities that the York Road Partnership already provides. I'll go with that.
Success can be measured many ways, and perhaps in a perfect world, every candidate's going to stand up and say, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. The answer is, in two years, everything we've discussed, we can initiate. Why? We have decades of time that we're trying to fix. Are we going to be able, two years from now, to definitely say we've solved it? No. I'm going to be quite honest with you. Will we be at a position to say we've begun the proper course? Absolutely. Four years from now, will we be in a position of saying, yes, not only have we begun, we are seeing concrete results? And perhaps in six to eight years, we can talk about everything we've done. The problem is, when you look at a record and say, over the past eight years, over the past 20 years, what did we always want to do and haven't done? That's the question.
All right. So, this is the educator coming out of me. So, forgive me if I do things that's a little bit more simple that you already know, and you're like, Rodney, we got it, right? Forgiveness to teacher in me. What is a SMART goal? You guys know this. It's an acronym. A SMART goal is specific, it's measurable, it's attainable, it's relevant, it's time-bound. It's a SMART goal, right? So, having more, or better, or improved, those are ideals, those aren't SMART goals. Okay? So, with that being said, let's talk about SMART goals. I talked to you guys about the how-to. I talked to you guys about the how-to. I have a three-point plan: schools, cleanliness, and affordability, okay? So, here we go. Success for me in two years was the first one is schools. I created something, a quality-of-life survey for my own school when I was a PTO president. It was a pre- and post-survey. Listed very short, simple questions that just took a school climate. Then we did some stuff. Then we did the post-survey and measured those changes. Are more people engaged, happy, satisfied? Do you think your students' grades have gone up? That's a measurement that we can look at, year one, year two, this school, that school, and see, okay, now that we have the temperature, where do we need to deploy resources? How do we need to be involved? Success for me is being able to do that for all of our schools, all of our schools in our district, it's not that many. The second thing, affordability, an increase from what we currently have from people taking advantage of the peak rewards programs on a map, and being able to graphically show, we had these many houses, these many, on a map, taking advantage of the peak rewards programs, having affordable, reduced costs. Now, we have this many. My goal is to have about 20, 25% to go up from 10 to 25 in those two years. That's a SMART goal, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, time-bound. The third thing, cleanliness. From each of the middle schools, I would like them to be in year two of a three-year program, getting service learning that was cleaning up our neighborhoods. Those are SMART goals. That's why I'm running for our city council. Thank you.
Time-bound.
Time-bound.
All right. So, let's start off with Bill again. This time, we're running out of time, and I let it go over a little bit. We want to stop at 8:30 sharp. So, one minute, if you want to do the closing remarks.
Oh, oh, closings, okay.
And pretty much that what does success look like was a pretty darn good closing, wasn't it?
So, actually, if it's, I have it 8:18, and we're trying to finish by 8:30, could we each have three minutes?
Two minutes, because the hosts want to introduce some closing. So, two minutes.
Two minutes, two minutes, all right.
Yeah, they wanted, did you guys get to ask your?
So, yeah, I mean, were there questions from the audience that didn't get asked?
There's a bunch, and there's going to be time afterwards for you guys to socialize and get a one-on-one.
So, I want you to see, right here, this is an example of what I do. I am always working to try to get more for you guys, at least more of us trying to tell you what you should know about us if you're going to make an informed decision on April 26 or during early voting, April 14 to April 21. I'm Bill Henry. As I said at the beginning, I've been your councilman for eight years. I want to keep helping. I, it's, 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 I know that might be boring, I know that may not be, you know, peppy, or spicy, or anything like that, but I like helping, and I have always done that. That's what I do. I like to be part of my community and help my community be better and stronger. What I have found is that there are not a lot of people in City Hall that share the values of those of us in this room. And I know that because the first term I was on the council, I offered a lot of the ideas that I'm hearing from the other candidates, things like a district forested, you know, and what I found is that there isn't a lot of support from the current administration or the current council. Next council, however, is hopefully going to be much more progressive, and with your help, the next mayor could be more progressive also. And I want to be part of what I see as a real sea change in how Baltimore runs itself and how the City Hall can actually be a force for progress and not merely just a trying to keep things from getting worse. I want to be part of that, I want to help you guys be part of that. Bill Henry, City Council.
First and foremost, let me say what a pleasure it's been to be with you this evening and discuss these many issues. I am going to be that individual who wants to be proactive. I want to combat the reactivity of our current, of our current city council. We in Baltimore need a proactive council. I want to be that proactive councilman. Moreover, we need to make sure that special interest doesn't get into our city government. It's a major problem, and that's what I'm fighting for, and that's the reason why I'm asking for your vote. I invite you to look at my webpage, legalupi.com. I invite the opportunity of being able to answer your questions, and I can assure you, when you see either on my leaflets or on the webpage a campaign phone number, when you ring that number, you'll get me. And that will continue, should I have the privilege of being your councilman. When you call me, even if you have to leave a message, you don't get me immediately, you will get me to respond to you because you are my only special interest. Francisco Legalupi, City Council, 4th District. Thank you so much.
Signs don't vote. Endorsements don't vote. Money doesn't vote. We vote. And when we go to the polls and we think about this election cycle, and we think about the meaning of representative government, and the essence of what that is, I encourage us to think like this. Representative government, what does that mean? That means I hope to choose a person that would do what I would do if I had the time, space, opportunity, et cetera, to do it myself. That's representative government. My history's strong. My background is impeccable. My master's degree is in management.
No, no, I'm sorry. You don't need the state to get that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
That's all you, Rodney.
William, my William.
Sorry.
But I say that to say this, I say that to say this. A lot of times, we can get lost in the smoke and mirrors of establishment and political machines and other situations. I love Bill. But the background of incumbency, or any of those other things, but the truth of the matter is, when we really do this, what would I do? I want somebody that would do the things and think along the lines if I were in that position. This is why I'm running. This is why I ask for your opportunity to be our city councilman, to do these things that I've already demonstrated, on a broader scale for the quality of life of us all that choose to live here. Rodney C. Burris, City Council, Baltimore.
Couple of quick thoughts in closing here. First, I really do want to thank the other three gentlemen sitting up here. We've had three now of these events, and they've been lively and informative. Two days before the first one, my wife had our third child, and she has not been able to come to these events. But this one's being recorded, and I want to thank my wife Carolyn for all that she does for me and allowing me to be away.
He mentioned you at the other one, too.
And my daughter Ella, and my son Oliver, and my son Leo. I love you guys very much, and I'll kiss you when I get home. We have a chance in our city to head in a new direction, but we're only going to head in that new direction if we elect new leadership. I know that tonight, some people have talked about machine politics and special interests. You know, my machines in this audience, it's Ms. Janice, and Ms. Paulette, and Ms. Margaret, there you are, up there, and it's Kate. Ms. Janice, I see you. The reason why I've gotten so much support in this campaign from teachers and many other organizations is because I'm an organizer, and I started organizing early. And with the support of many people that felt like they haven't had a voice in a long time, we're creating a movement and giving them a voice for a new direction in Baltimore. And I ask for your vote. I'm always open for a coffee. My cellphone number's on every piece of literature, and I always answer the phone. Or I'll return you. Yes, ma'am, I did. All right, thank you very much.
All right, folks, before I turn it over to our hosts, was this useful for you guys? If you guys can give feedback to the organizers on how you like this particular one and what we could do better, that would make sure the next one we do is even better than this. And Chris, take it away. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, so much for coming out and for your time this evening. There's a few people we'd like to thank. We want to thank Umar, and let's hear it for, he did a fabulous thing. Really great. We want to thank the York Road Partnership, Chris is extraordinary leader. The GBA, Megan, and all the members of the GBA. And the people that helped set this up tonight, the Senator Theater, Clark Burger, who provided the food out there, Adventure Productions, who are taping Tidewater Entertainment for the PA equipment. And particularly, we really want to thank Loyola University, their staff has been great. And let's hear it for our timekeepers, Casey and Donna, they were fabulous. Great.